Okay, it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna open the meeting. And I'm Terry Bonzer, I'm the chair. You guys wanna introduce yourselves?
Teresa Bascom.
Kathy Mayo.
Bonnie Winona McKinnon.
Okay, so the chairman shall call each session. I'm gonna read the, I'll call each application to order and open the meeting for each one. Members will ask questions at any point during the testimony. Each person who appears should be required to state their name and address and indicate their affiliation with the case. Any member of the board or chairman may request that any party to the case speak a second time. Any party to the case who wants to ask a question of another party to the case must do through, do so through the chairperson. The applicant shall be called to present their case and their abudders in favor shall be allowed to speak. The abudders in the opposition shall be allowed to speak. The board will hear any evidence that pertains to the case from other parties that wish to speak. The applicant and those in favor shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. Those in opposition will be allowed to speak in rebuttal. The hearing will be declared, and then the hearing will be declared closed and we'll discuss it and make a decision. Okay, I'm gonna open up the first case. Okay, this is, the first case we're gonna open up is case 22-006-VA. This is the application from Edward Chaputz requesting a variance from Article II, Section C, 3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of a deck with a five-foot setback on the side of the property line where a 20-foot setback is required. The property is located at 22 Cove Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire and identified as tax map 68 lot 68. Okay, do we have the applicant? Ed, okay, you wanna come up?
Can you come in? Yeah, alright. It has a microphone.
Okay, you can present your case and read your, I'll have to read the five criteria and present your case of what's, what's going on.
So get your paper. You have to state your name and your.
Say your name, yeah.
My name is Edward Chaputz, live at 22 Cove Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire.
Your name?
Tony Chaputz, same address.
Okay.
And applying for the deck, a variance for a deck that is nine by 11.
Okay.
And the reason for it is to provide a safer egress from a bedroom, safer egress, safer entrance into a existing hot tub and a safer exit down around to the back of the, to our basement. And that's the main reason. And by having that, it eliminates us walking on mud and ice during the winter and fall time and springtime. And I know you, three of you went by some other thing. I have pictures if you wanna see it. Bonnie?
I would.
If I can't mind something, you mean?
Thank you. Do you have your five criteria?
You have the five criteria, you can read.
Review those, please.
Oh, do you want me to read those?
Did you say, Bonnie?
The deck is already there.
Whoops.
Are you kidding me?
No, I got it.
Nice.
Okay, number one, granting a variance would not be contrary to public interest. I put, does not affect public interest. It's on to the side of the house, not visible from street or lake. Variance, it provides a safer egress from house and safer access to existing tub. And then granting variance, same as above. What else did I put? Adds value, nice clean deck instead of dirt, dirty ground, hardship. It was an area which formed ice in the winter and mud in the spring, making access unsafe from, when off from the higher elevations. Purpose was to eliminate the unsafe area. And B, the size of the lot and shape of the lot makes it hard to make any improvements without violating the ordinance. And this is the reason for the variance.
Okay, originally you had a variance for the house, it was 8.1, right?
Yes.
And so, for the car of the house was 8.1, and the deck is a little further down, it comes out. What was the original deck that was there that you?
It was just a platform with steps. There was nothing, no footings or anything on it.
What was it, like three by three, four?
Yeah, something like that. It was, it was put there because we needed it to get occupancy for the, the egress from the house, needed something to come out from.
Right, but you could've like, I mean you made it nine, it's nine feet out from the house and 11 feet.
Yeah.
Going, running along the house, right?
Correct.
Right, so you could've made like six feet and you would've been at the eight feet, right?
Yes, I didn't.
You told me that, when I went out to look at it, that the deck was part of the original design. Cause I, I said you rebuilt all this and you said yes, and I said, was the deck part of the original design of your building?
Oh, the egress in the house, yes.
So you had an original deck design, which is what we approved in 2018, right? With the 8.1 foot setback?
Yeah.
So did you build a deck and then rebuild this one?
No, I didn't build anything there. It was just that little platform that was there. So we could walk out the door.
Okay. I'm just wondering why you went beyond what you already had a variance for when your original design had a deck and you didn't follow those deck designs and went bigger. And now you're asking for a, oops, I already did it, can you forgive me? I just, just wanna know.
I was just, I was trying to make it look nicer and accommodate the existing hot tub.
You say that your decking helps you get down in the winter, but when I walked that area with you, your deck doesn't get you down to your basement at all.
It opens to the front.
And you have foot, flagstones which also get covered with ice and mud and stuff.
Those flagstones are, are just temporary. I put those there.
Okay.
Because I had some people coming to visit and I didn't want them to slip.
Okay.
I hope someday to be able to actually make those flush in the ground, but what I do is I move them aside, especially in the winter, so he can get down with the snowblower.
Okay, you did mention he snowblowed that area.
Yeah.
Having grown up in the country and all I know that snow and ice is gonna build up on everything and it gets slippery, especially flagstones.
Yeah, so I just put those there so people could get down when we had like visitors. We have like a little, a swing, not a swing, a glider. So it kinda is just a direct path over to the glider and I remove those in the winter so that he can get up and down.
Okay.
So, yeah, the drawing you gave us, it showed, the drawing you gave us with your application, you, it showed like the deck was, original was, it doesn't show like a small old deck, it shows like a complete deck.
I don't think the, oh, that wasn't the orig, that was what I drew, what we did.
This is what you drew?
That's what we did.
Okay, this wasn't from the original 2018?
No.
Okay, so this is just, you're just showing the 11 by nine. Okay, any other questions, anybody? Yeah, I'm gonna, wait a minute, second. You have any questions?
I don't, Terry.
I'll just add, like I definitely prompted him to put this up because he had fallen last week. It is a bit of a slope since you came out to see it, so I kind of pushed him and when you asked, you know, how come you built it already? And I actually personally thought because he came before with the variance, I didn't realize we had to come again. And I was pushing him, you know, nagging wife, I guess, because he had fallen. So, just for your info, when you asked, you know, why did you go and do it, it's probably my fault.
You didn't have to come again if you stayed within the eight foot, one inch setback. The only reason you're here now is because.
It went beyond that.
The deck you went is beyond what you had initially requested.
So that's probably my fault, cause I.
Is it, I noticed you had like, you have a little covering you put over that deck?
It's not on the top, it's on the sides.
It's just the side.
Oh, okay, cause I saw some posts and I didn't know.
It's like a, almost like a curtain rod, a heavy-duty curtain rod. I asked him to put that up and I hang plants from there, just looks nice.
Okay, no, I just saw the thing and I thought maybe you had like a little canvas roof on there or something.
No, no.
You took down during the winter.
It's literally like a plant hanger.
Okay. Okay, no, that's that, no, okay, you're good for now, we'll hear from the abudders. You guys, are you?
With the abudders.
Okay, do you wanna speak on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. With the abudders.
My name is Kathy Lewis. And Walter Lewis, 20 Cove Road. And so I know that the, the estate or the town requires a 20-foot setback. I don't know what this setback is of this deck. We got a notification that it might be five feet from our property line. I don't know what it is. And so, we're not asking it to be 20 feet, you know, it's fine the way it is. And I'm only requesting that it not, many, many people that I know of that live in Nottingham, especially on the lake, put up these decks and then eventually close it in, screen it in, and then add it to their house and take out the walls of the house and it becomes part of the house. And that's a common thing, I know a lot of people that do it. And I don't know how strict you people have become over the years with that stuff, but we're requesting that it can be left as is, as long as it's not screened in, there's no roof ever put on it, and that it's not added to part of the house, because then it becomes a big blob closer to our property line.
So you don't have a problem with the deck where it is?
No, I was gonna say it's the way it is forever. And not screened in and not roofed, because there are big posts going up and it looks like that's what might've been intended eventually. I have no idea.
But I thought it was like, you know, sometimes people have those screen rooms they can put on there with posts, they put a roof on it.
That's what I mean, that's what it looks like, but.
Yeah, I didn't know if that's what they had done.
I don't, I, no, it's just, as long as it stays as an open deck the way it is and it's not added on to or screened in or closed in.
Okay.
You know, and added to the house, we're fine to leave it alone.
Okay, so now the, the rock wall there, did you build that? Or was that there when you bought it?
Rock wall?
Well, the, the wall that, from the garage.
Behind your garage.
You mean part of?
There's a wall right beside that deck.
Yeah, that's the way it was.
Oh, that's, okay, so you didn't do that one?
No.
Okay, I just wondered.
No.
Okay, um, okay, so that's it?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
Just, just trying to find out what was going on.
Okay.
We just got notified, that's all.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Any others?
They're all for the next case.
Oh, they're on the next case, okay. Okay, so you're all done?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? I'm sorry, did anybody have questions? No? Okay, so that was it for the abudders and the applicant. Nobody has any more questions for the applicant? Nope, okay, so I'm gonna close this case and we'll go into deliberating on this case. So I'm gonna close case 22-006-VA and we'll discuss it, so. Okay, is there any?
Anything?
I, the people most affected are the Lewises and they don't have an objection to it.
Right.
Not that future property owners might, but.
Right.
I think it's set up in such a way that it's far from their house, it's their garage that they're next to. So I, I don't know if we should put some kind of a caveat in there that they can't turn it into a room in the house.
That was my question.
To remain as a deck.
It has to remain as an open deck.
Right, cause when you go over there, I mean, most of our setbacks are for, you know, fire protection and blocking a view of somebody, but I mean, there's that big stone wall there, the deck goes out, so it's, it's not, and they have no objection, so it's not like it's encroaching, but you probably should've come in before you built it and that would've solved problems there. Okay, so we have any?
Bonnie, would you pass those pictures down?
Yes.
You know, if we had had any issues, you'd have to take it down, so it really behooves to keep your permits so that you know what you're gonna be building in the future and stick to what you say you're gonna do when you come in to see us. The three of us were all on.
Right, the last one.
Were here when you came before us. Yeah, these posts are not timbers that are gonna be being added on to, this is, these tim, posts that are here are part of the frame, which is metal, right? Isn't it like an aluminum?
No.
It's not, it's all wood with a cap?
There's an aluminum case around it.
That's what I thought, yes, yeah, so that, I, there's no roof that's gonna be being put on this, they would have to take this, this decorative piece off in order to put something else on it to go up, to carry the weight, especially in an area where you get a lot of snow and ice buildup. When you mentioned timbers sticking up, I'm thinking Kathy and I went and saw it and I don't remember anything that looked like timbers that, for a pitched roof.
Right, I think it looks like something that's a commercially made, that like, yeah, you can buy those and.
You got this as a kit, the, the frame around it that you have, she has her curtains and stuff on, that was like a frame, a kit frame or something like that, or post that you bought?
No, she talked about the high posts where I hang the plants.
Yeah.
And the, and the balusters, that was all a kit.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's just something you buy and.
Yeah.
So I don't think you have to worry about it being a three-season room or in addition to their bedroom at, at any point in the near future, Mrs. Lewis.
Well, that's what I just wanted.
Yeah, I know.
It's in the records that it doesn't become that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll state that we're just given, you know, if we do anything, it's a variance for a deck only.
But it's an open deck.
Yeah, an open deck. Yeah, if you wanna make it.
I can.
Okay, if you'd like.
I make a motion that we approve case number 22-006-VA. Application from Edward Chaputz requesting a variance from Article II, Section C, 3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of a deck with a five-foot setback from the side property line where a 20-foot setback is required. The deck must remain an open deck without a roof. The property is located at 22 Cove Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 68 lot 68.
Second?
Okay.
Sorry, can we just add, not only just without a roof, but she said, asked for screening on walls, it remains open?
Well, screening would be a good without a roof.
I would say screening won't matter without a roof, though.
That's true. Good point, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, she, she did mention screening, so I can see why you'd say it, but if you don't put a roof on it, it doesn't matter about the screening.
Well, they could, I suppose technically have, a screened roof is still a roof, no roof. Okay.
You've been seconded.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the variance for case 22-006-VA, the application from Edward Chaputz requesting a variance from Article II, Section C, 3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of a deck with a five-foot setback from the side property line where a 20-foot setback is required. The property is located at 22 Cove Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire and identified as tax map 68 lot 68. And the deck must remain an open deck, no roof, no additional building to it, it just, not to become part of the house, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second? All those in favor? Okay. Nobody opposed, so you're good.
Thirty days.
Yeah, now, I may say thirty days, but your deck's already there, so it's not.
And Terry, you probably should've told them that they could've waited for a full board if they wanted to.
Oh, that was my mistake, yeah, my mistake, yeah, I should've told you.
They got it, they got it.
I should've told you, yeah, there was a full board, that was my mistake, so, okay.
You better tell the next guy.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We've had that two-month layoff, Bonnie.
I know.
Forget all those rules.
You too.
See you later.
Enjoy.
Okay, I'm gonna open, the next case is, I'm gonna open the next case, case 22-007-VA, application from Kung Food LLC requesting a variance from Article II, Section E, 2A1 of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit, to permit the building of an addition on an existing commercial structure with an 88-foot setback from the road where a 100-foot setback is required in a commercial zone. The property is located at 2 Mary Hill Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire and identified as tax map 4 lot 2-1. Okay, can you state your name and are you affiliated with the application?
Sure, my name is Doug McGuire, I'm with the Dubay Group and I'm here representing the applicant, Kung Food. And this is one of the owners of Kung Food, Bobby Marcon.
Okay.
So, does everyone have a, a plan of what we're proposing included? Okay, cause I do have extra copies if anybody needs one.
I'm gonna ask you to see it.
I do have a zoomed-in version too, if that's helpful. Maybe I'll just, it, would it be all right if I hand this out? Just so you have?
Oh, sure, nope, go ahead.
Just, cause I think.
It's just a zoomed-in version of what was included in the application. There you are.
Do you, yeah, yep. Do you have this too?
We have the opposite.
Five, five criteria? Okay.
So, what, what you can see here is, this is a property, 2 Mary Hill Road, located at the corner of Mary Hill Road and the old Concord Turnpike. This was the, an older historic barn that the clients have, or that my clients have purchased to renovate and restore and use as a venue space. We have been before the planning board with this proposal and we did obtain their conditional approval, you know, for the conversion of the space. But one of the items is that they were looking to expand a portion of the building to add room for a kitchen, to be able to kinda have that be the modernized space, because the existing building obviously doesn't have the, the modern facilities that would be needed for the kitchen space of the venue. So, that's why we're here tonight. This, because it's a corner lot and because it is within the, I think it's, what is it, 1,000 feet from New Hampshire Route 4, you have enhanced setbacks for buildings. It's 100 foot from all property lines. And so, you know, on a lot, an existing lot of this size, that's a pretty significant restriction on the lot. But we are proposing the addition on the most conforming side of the building and moving towards, I mean, about half of the addition is proposed to be conforming within the setbacks. It's just the portion that is outside of the setbacks that we need the relief for. So that's the reason we're here. Would you like me to just briefly go through the criteria? Okay. So, first criteria, the proposed use will not diminish surrounding property values. The proposed expansion is to an existing historic barn, which is proposing to be fully renovated on the inside and out. And the venue that we're proposing is a permitted, permitted use within the zoning and the enhancing of this permitted use will have no impact on the surrounding property value. Number two, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The respected, or the requested expansion is directed towards the conforming portion of the lot, allowing for an updating of a historic barn for productive commercial use, which is obviously in the public's interest. Number three, little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship to the owner because owing to special conditions of the property to distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationships exist between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. The intent of the structure setback within the commercial zone, that, that's the intent of the ordinance. And proposing to expand the existing building on the most conforming side of the structure is required to bring the kitchen portion of the proposed venue space up to current code and this expansion would have no noticeable impact on the property or its surroundings. And it's reasonable because the existing building is being fully renovated and improved and the minor proposed expansion is only slightly out of the required building setbacks. Number four, granting the variance would do substantial justice. The proposed owners need the additional building area to accommodate a modernized kitchen area with, within the renovated historic building and relief would requested would allow for the project to move forward as approved by the planning board. And the last criteria, the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance because the ordinance is maintained because the minor requested building expansion is on the most conforming side of the existing historic barn and will have no noticeable impact on the surrounding properties. So with that, happy to turn it back to the board for any questions that you may have.
Okay, I had one question, on the corner of the existing, what's the closest, that corner that's closest to Mary Hill? How far that, like 20, 25 feet? How far is?
Of the existing building?
The existing barn, yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't have the exact measurement of that, but yeah, you're right, it's, it's about, about 25 feet.
Yeah, 20, 25 feet. I mean, so you have all that building, you know, that's all existing building and it's, you know, right there and the, the only reason you asked a variance is because you're looking for this addition.
That, that's correct.
Other than that, you'd be in good shape. So I mean, you have, how long is this, how long is that existing building? Like with the added?
So, the existing building, I do have that number.
Okay. Must be at least 60, 70 feet, yeah?
I guess I don't have the exact number, Bobby, do you have an idea of? I mean, I would, I would estimate it's about, about, probably closer to 70 feet with a 15-foot addition.
Right, yeah. Cause there's a, there's a lot of building in the setback now and you just want this little piece back here. Now, you meet the 100 from the Route 4.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the, the existing building is essentially entirely in the setbacks and they were just, you know, working with that footprint. And so, in trying to put any type of an addition on, we did propose it on, as I said, the most conforming side, so we didn't put it on the front encroaching, or we certainly didn't put it on the side that's getting closer to Mary Hill.
Right.
So we tried to put it where, you know, we do have a portion of it that's conforming in the, within the setbacks.
Yeah, you're already really half of it, almost.
Yeah.
And it's 100 from this, the other back line, right? Behind it, on the side, I mean.
Yes, yeah, so the only, the only encroachment setback is the setback adjacent to Mary Hill Road, which is the side that the entire building is encroaching already, so.
Right, right.
So did they get a variance for that encroachment?
That's an existing building.
That's an existing building, they're already getting the.
I know it's an existing building, but.
Right, but.
It's, it was being used commercially for a while.
You mean, is it, was it grandfathered in, oh, ages ago? I don't.
How did they, yeah, exactly, how did they have a business there before, without getting a variance?
I think because the building is probably older than our, well, I know it is, it's older than our ordinances.
The building is, but like you can't, you can't just do something commercial without a, like you're changing the use from agricultural to commercial. At some point, that was changed. And it would seem to me you need, you would need to get a variance for the setback.
But I think the setback, I mean, 1,000 feet, so.
No, it's 100.
100.
Well, no, but I'm saying that the, the commercial zone goes back, so this was.
That's true.
This was already in a commercial zone, so it wasn't like a residential. This was already in a commercial zone, so it wasn't like a residential, it wasn't, they weren't changing it to a different use.
Right, so, I mean, it was previously, I think, done as like...
Antiques or something, yeah.
Yeah, antiques, or multiple parties were selling like on, like various antiques, and so the commercial use itself is permitted by the zoning, and so the use of the building wouldn't warrant any, any type of variance. It was, and I think if we weren't looking to add the kitchen, I think we would have been fine, too. It was just that the expanded portion is within the setbacks.
Right.
And not grandfathered as part of the rest of the building is, so...
Did you have a letter from Dale?
Yeah, it's in the front part of that.
He looked at it. No, that's from Joanna.
Yeah, Dale did issue us a denial.
He did.
Yeah.
So what are you gonna side the barn with?
Here, Bonnie.
The same, the outside of the addition portion is gonna be the same as...
Wooden clapboard.
Bonnie.
I believe so, right?
Yeah, board and batten.
Board and batten.
Board and batten is not clapboard.
That's true.
Board and batten?
It's wooden, board and batten.
I have to drive by that every day, so I wanna know what it's gonna look like.
I have a picture if you'd like to see.
You have a picture of it done?
Uh, just a portion, it's not done yet.
Because you have stairs on the, on the end of that barn, there are stairs, right? And those aren't showing, but they're, they're gonna be taken off in their part, that's where the addition's for, right?
Correct, and we are, we are adding the stairs on, but those would be in the conforming portion of the lot.
Okay, so these are stairs over here?
Yeah.
I thought that was just maybe a walkway or something.
Yeah, no, we're gonna continue the stairs, 'cause there's, there's second floor access through there, so they wanna make...
Okay, like storage, or...
Yeah, they wanna keep that piece.
Yeah, so you'll pour like, pour a cement floor there, and for your kitchen, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a slab.
A slab with a foundation, and...
Yep.
And what about the windows? Are they gonna look like old kind of windows with small panes?
That's kind of the only thing we modernized, was we put black, we did black windows with the, with the historic grids on them.
Wasn't it six-on-six that you guys had?
Yeah, I think it's six-on-six.
That's not very modern.
Six-on-six.
The black is relatively modernized, I guess, but other than that, it's still trying to keep that historic.
A lot of old buildings have black windows.
Oh, really?
Oh, good.
Very pretty.
They do, yeah.
Very pretty.
Perfect.
Little black shutters and just...
Does this building have a foundation? I can't, is it on a slab, the whole thing? It is the whole, so the kitchen as well will just be on a slab.
How'd they do that?
That was Dale's letter, do you wanna read it?
I bet it.
Oh, okay, oh, you pushed it back, okay.
Thank you. Well, they must have lifted it up to put a slab under it. It was built before slabs, yes. Like, what's the year of the barn, do you know?
They redid it in the 80s, so they took the whole thing down and put it back together with the concrete.
And now they're redoing it again, on the inside and outside, yeah.
And I met with you, didn't you say something about having a purchase and sales agreement for the land that, that's this?
Adjacent, yeah.
Have you heard anything more on that?
They're just waiting on us to, I mean, Paul, do you wanna speak to that, or?
Sure, Paul Simlyar's, yeah, we're moving forward with that purchase.
Okay.
I'm gonna say maybe two to three weeks, we should own it, and it'll be ours.
How much land is it?
Thirty-three acres.
Oh, that's a big addition.
So, the old house, that was within the 100-foot setback from Route 4, right, I assume?
The old, the old house was partially within the setback, yeah.
Yeah, that was, so I mean, if you had done something with that, you'd have been all right, I mean, you could have put something in there, done something, you'd have been fine, but you did, you know, but, okay.
It's gone and rebuilt.
Right. Yeah, first I wasn't sure, I keep driving by there, I wasn't sure if you were tearing it down or gonna rebuild, but it kept slowly just up the...
I don't think they were sure either.
We were initially, yeah, we were initially gonna piece by piece it, but then someone came along and asked to buy the whole thing, and so that they could go rebuild it up north.
They took it away, yeah.
So they took every piece of it and rebuilt it.
Yeah, because you started out it, I thought, well, maybe they're gonna do something, but every time you took something off, it looked worse and worse, so...
What town was it that they're rebuilding?
An hour from here somewhere.
Gorham?
That's more than an hour.
Yeah, Gorham's more than an hour.
I think it's Gorham, is it?
Couple hours.
That's quite the project.
I don't think there's any...
Are there any other questions or comments on this?
Is any of Butters?
Nope.
No one's here to object?
Nope.
Okay, now I just have to let you know, it's a four-member board, and you are, you can have a five-member board, we don't have five, we have four, we do have Gorham, and
We're comfortable going forward.
You're comfortable with, okay.
Thank you.
That's all we need.
Speaking as a future Butter, I really like these guys, and I think they should...
I think it's gonna be a pretty building.
Thank you.
From what I've seen, yeah.
Okay, no other question, no nothing, no comments? Okay, I'm gonna close this case, and we'll deliberate, and so I'm gonna close case 22-007 VA. Any comment, questions? I mean, there is...
No, I just have a question.
...a building there in the setback, and this is way...
Just, I have a question on the 96-foot side, how come that's okay with 88?
Well, they're going for the closest, the 88, 'cause they're...
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I kinda thought, but I...
Right, 'cause the 96 is further than the 88, so they're all right there, if they get the variance.
Yes, I will make a motion to... Do I have to read it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Application from Kung Food LLC, case number 22-007 VA, requesting a variance from Article II, Section E2A1 of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building an addition on an existing commercial structure with an 88-foot setback from the road where a 100-foot setback is required in a commercial zone. The property is located at 2 Mary Hill Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map four lot 2-1.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve it, right, that was the mo, I didn't hear the first one, okay. So there's a motion and a second to approve case, the variance for case 22-007-VA, the application from Kung Food requesting a variance from Article II, Section E2A1 of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of an addition on the existing commercial structure with an 88-foot setback from the road where a 100-foot setback is required in a commercial zone. The property is located at 2 Mary Hill Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map four lot 2-1. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, it's four, nothing, you know?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you do have a 30-day window of, you know, somebody could object, but there's nobody here, so I think you're... Probably take you 30 days to find somebody to build it, anyway. Thank you. Okay, now we have minutes, right?
I sent you just a couple things on those minutes, right, Kevin?
Oh, I was gonna...
Yes, what? Okay. I move that we approve the minutes of 6/21/22 as minorly edited.
Okay, second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of 6/21/22 as edited. Any other changes, any other, nothing? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Anything on the docs for next month?
As far as zoning, I haven't heard anything, but usually with zoning, it's kind of like a week of, maybe a two weeks before. I haven't heard of any.
Okay, good. So nothing's come from the planning board, so that's either of them?
Nothing, although they are chock full of cases, so I would imagine something should be done.
Yeah, like I said to Kevin, you know, winter's coming, and people gotta get their variance, and then they gotta, you know, so it's probably gonna get less and less, I would think, because, you know, you only have so much time to get...
To build.
To get done what you wanna get done, so, but sometimes we get them, I guess.
Yeah, my short time hitter realizes no amount of reason.
No, there is... Yeah, that was unusual, two months, I mean, we've had like one week off, one month off, but we've never...
Yeah, it was three months.
Yeah.
Not choose three months, that was the entire summer.
July and August.
We were here June.
We did one...
July, July to August, August to September.
Oh, well, I look at June because we were in June, just with those minutes for...
Fair enough.
July and August. Anything on the Water Cross?
I haven't heard anything from the Water Cross, I kinda feel like it's kind of...
What is going on?
I just haven't heard anything from it, so...
See, and they ran all three events.
Nothing's been clear that they weren't stopped or halted, and I've not heard a thing, Chris hasn't heard a thing. I probably should mention, you guys, you guys probably heard this from Chris, at the end of the month, he's leaving for another opportunity.
Auburn.
I believe the board is selecting, are gonna fire an interim for now.
Okay.
All right. Interim, and then...
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second.
I'll second it.
You got three seconds and one motion. Okay, is the motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.